Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. Such a cold evening. Pray everyone's safe the next few days as this weather comes in. We're missing Mr. Oxer and we send our thoughts and prayers out to him as he's a bit under the weather. But again, thank you all for being here. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Don't think there's any other folks we need to do on the roll call, but I'm going to ask Mr. Hinkle to give us an invocation, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. I would ask everyone to please stand when we do our pledge. But at this time, Mr. Hinkle?
Power our heads, please. Precious God, as we come before you tonight to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Help us to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and minds. In Christ's name, we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda from the council, staff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We would like to add, under Roman numeral ten, new business, consideration of a Verizon contract. And also, for number Roman numeral fourteen, we would like to strike that off the agenda as that has been moved to February's agenda briefing.
Okay, council, if you will be agreeable, we'll approve the agenda with the recommendations from staff. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Now. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, hearing none, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and it consists of three sets of minutes. Is there a motion to approve our consent? These minutes will be approved with one motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve our consent, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Now. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, hearing none, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is recognitions and presentations, and we'll start with Mr. Wyatt.
At this time, I'm calling Emily Watson, our Parks and Recreation Director up.
Thank you. So tonight, we will recognize Jose Canaro, the Department's employee of the month. Jose is our town maintenance technician and handles all maintenance issues for all departments. Everything from electrical problems to plumbing problems, framing limbs, watering flowers, to keeping all facilities clean and optimal. Jose works all hours, shifts, in weather circumstances, and he never complains. Seventeen degrees this morning at 6:00 a.m., he was out picking up trash along our greenway so that our community was nice, clean, and presentable. Every event that happened in December, Jose supported. He stayed late, made sure that everything was clean, everyone was okay, had what they needed, everything was broken down, while still responding to his regular maintenance duties. Jose is a jack-of-all-trades, a great teammate, and we're thankful to have him.
Thank you.
No, just thank you very much for everything.
Great, thank you. And I do see you most mornings on one of the ATVs, and so appreciate the work that you do every day. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, it's time to recognize our Employee of the Year. He's worked here a little over three years, and when he first started working here, it was quite commonly, the first month, that not only would he work his shift[393.31][393.31](laughter) He's just now figured out what's happening. Not only would he work his shift during the day, but he would come back and work night shift because of the need to have officer presence in our town. Since that time, he has worked diligently to set a bar for all of our officers in what it means to be a police officer professional, but also be someone that people in the community look up to. He's volunteered as a coach, he's volunteered in all of our schools in some capacity. A lot of the events that we have in town, he is volunteering first among the officers to work those events in extra time. He's ensured that all of our officers have adequate training and up-to-date equipment. We just had a discussion today at the radio station in Statesville. He, along with you all, have made sure that we have our salaries commensurate with what professional law enforcement should be. When they sign on to earn that salary, Chief Watson has also expected them to rise in their level of performance. In addition to that, he's ensured that they've had proper equipment and training and certifications. We used to have to hire somebody else, a part-time officer, to come in and do our firearms, for example. When we had other specialized training, we had to go to a college or to beg another law enforcement agents. We now have CPR-certified professionals on staff, firearms-training professionals on staff, driving-training professionals on staff that are instructors. That's just a small example of what I could stand up here and talk about a lot longer. More importantly, Josh has offered to help, I'm sorry, Chief Watson, to help several of the other departments in any way that he could. I regularly brag on staff, but this past year, Chief Watson has been the quintessential person of not just doing a job, but making this a community that you want to be and respected by not only your employees and other coworkers, but the community as well. At this time, please recognize Chief Watson as our Employee of the Year.[534.41][534.41](applause)
The one reason I feel like I can even have this award is because of all those guys and girls who let me take my time. Because they come and work their butts off, they train hard, they give it all, I mean, they all came in, you know, tonight to this, and I really appreciate everything you guys do because you make my job, make me look good. Thank you guys for everything you do.
Before you go away, if you would, your family to go up and have a picture with you. I would like to recognize his oldest son, Aiden, drove a long while to get here this evening and brought some woman with him, I don't know what.[607.29][607.29](laughter) She probably helped him find the directions. But if you all would go up for a family picture, please, and then I would like all the officers to go around the chief for the second picture. While the officers are going up, a couple of the things that I left out is this past year, we had a couple fatalities. That's a shame in our community, however, because of Chief Watson's direction and him ensuring that he had proper officer's training, it's the first time ever we've handled fatalities without having to call another agency. We appreciate their ability to do so. Hold on, we got a rookie hiding. Get in line. You can't say no rookie or it's going to be bad.[682.01][682.01](laughter) I know you're not a rookie.
No, you're fine. Just squishy in a little bit.
I don't know how, Ron, you and the staff were able to keep that from him, knowing that that was probably a bit of a challenge, but well-deserved. Chief Watson, you've done a great job in working with the officers, really since you've been here, and it's noticeable, we appreciate it, and look forward to your continued service to the town, so thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our audit, and turn it over to Justin.
At this time, I'll have Mr. Allen Thompson come up to present our audit.
Good evening. Happy New Year to everybody. You should have a presentation summary in front of you, a smaller book. Sorry. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page one. Somehow, auditors get stuck behind the best news there is. I present some schools and they present all these wonderful awards to children, and now we're behind the police officer and the guy, maintenance guy, doing awesome stuff. But I got good news, too, so congratulations to them. The main thing you hire us as an independent audit firm to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issue an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote "clean" report, a good report. No findings, so kudos to you as a board, to the finance staff, and Justin and the town manager for doing a good job on everything, and to all the department heads, because it takes a team effort to have a good audit. On page one, under qualitative aspects of accounting practices, there's three paragraphs underneath that, talks about accounting policies, accounting estimates, and financial statement disclosures. We were good with all of those. There were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And then on page two, there were no uncorrected misstatements, there were no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated December 1st. We're unaware that management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. And again, no other findings or issues. And if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page four. I don't say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but these are some of those numbers that we get asked about frequently, and so what we attempt to do is put in this first column, the current year numbers, and then put the four prior-year numbers beside it, so you get a feel for trend information. And you can see total fund balance there in the general fund at 6.1 million. If you were to go back to 2020, that number's 2.9 million. Unavailable fund balance is 939,000. Restricted and assigned is $760. Total general fund expenditures, including transfers, is 10.4 million, and in total fund balance as a percentage is 58.25 percent. Available fund balance is 5.1 million, and in available fund balance as a percentage is 49.28. I was telling Justin earlier, the, one of the things that's going to be unique when we see some charts and graphs on this, is you can see your fund balance going up at a nice trend, but because your expenditures and the growth you're having, and even a big capital outlay expense you had during the fiscal year, your percentages might dip, and it's just a mathematical equation. It's not good or bad as much as just trying to show you the information. So you see revenues over and expenses before transfers, the general fund was a minus 88,914. Capital projects was a minus 54,810. The water sewer fund was a positive 3.2 million. See total fixed assets there in your water sewer fund at 25 million, with accumulated depreciation at 10.5, and the cash at 5.8 million. Cash in your general fund was 5,490. Cash in capital projects is 942,000, and again, cash in water sewer fund was 5,840,000. Again, fund balance in general fund is 6.1, capital project 705,000, and water sewer fund was a positive 21.5 million. You see your property tax rates there for all five years, and then the collection percentages as well. Collection percentage, 98.49 percent. Then the total property valuation and total levy amounts, next, for all five years shown. And then total general fund revenues by department, you can see 10.3 million, and your general fund expenditures there at 10.4 million. And so on page five, you can see that blue line in total fund balance there trending upward, very nice analysis. Total fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures there on the bottom, 58.25, and your group-weighted average there in red. Then on page six, you see analysis of available fund balance as a percentage at 49.28 percent. I would say this, as the town continues to grow, and you can see from the fund balance, cash balances, the growth you've had, your fund balance percentages will come down, even though your fund balance is going up and your cash is going up. And it's just, again, that mathematical equation. When you look on the very bottom of that page four, where the total expenditures in the general fund are going up, that's going to bring that percentage down, just from a math standpoint. On the bottom, you see the analysis of revenues over and expenses before transfers, basically the profit in your general fund, capital project, and your water sewer fund. And then on page seven, you see total fixed assets, accumulated depreciation, and cash there, and the bar chart on the top, underneath that, you see cash balances and fund balances for the three funds, general fund, capital projects fund, and water sewer fund. Underneath that, with the total cash balances being 12.2 million, and total fund balances being 28.3 million. And then the property tax rates on page eight, along with the group-weighted average, and the collection percentage underneath that for the town, the group-weighted average, and the statewide average as well. And then finally, on page nine, you see, at the top chart, the general fund revenue broken down by percentage with almost 63 percent being out of the lower taxes, which is why we talk so much about that. And on the bottom, you see general government, public safety, and streets and public works being the three big ones down there. Again, what you're really hiring us to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements. We issued a quote-unquote "clean" report, unmodified report, so a good job by all, starting with you, Justin and his group, as well as everybody else involved. I'm happy to answer questions you might have of me, not just tonight, but if you ever got a question, please feel free to give the office a call. If I'm not there, get my cell number and chase me down, and I'll get you an answer to your question.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Nope.
Mr. Thompson, a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
The, page five, the fund balance percent of general fund expenditures. Talk to me about that chart again.
On the bottom?
The bottom chart, yeah.
Yes, sir. So one of the things that you do want to look at, the larger you get, you're going to sit, some, a lot of towns have fund balance policies, so you want to look, I mean, group-weighted average is what it is there, but if you're, if you flip back to page four, let's see if I can get this. You can see on the very bottom number there, you go from 3,584,000 in expenditures up to 10.4 million, realizing in the current year, the year of 63024, I won't get the number exactly right, was about a one and a half million, something like that, where you purchased an old-dollar general building, which is increasing expenditures there in the general fund, kind of more than you normally would have, which is going to end up being in the mathematical equation to bring that percentage down, even though your total fund balance increased during that year. I hope I'm explaining that well.
Oh, you got it. Yep, okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment that I am elated. I love it when a plan comes together, and this goes back to when our town manager was setting up here in 2016, I guess it was, and we knew we needed to better our financial position for all the challenges facing us going down the road, and it's taken us a few years, but we're there and continue to improve every year, and I'm tickled to death. I'm tickled to death. I think we are, I won't say financially secure, I guess you ever get financially secure with all the challenges, especially a growing town like Troutman, but we are a lot better positioned than we were, about 2016, doing your new math, you know, eight, nine years ago.
Right.
And I can remember a lot more challenging even before then. So I, you know, I love it, and this is the kind of thing that lets me sleep at night very soundly.
That's good news, yeah.
Mr. Thompson, thank you for a timely audit, and I appreciate you working with the staff and ensuring that we could get this accomplished, so thank you so much.
Yes, sir, we very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the one thing I would like to add to his report, on page eight, it shows the town of Troutman collection percentages. I would just like to, you all on council are aware, but I would like to reiterate for the public that's unaware, we do not actually collect our taxes. That is something that Iredell County does. And for whatever reason, three years in a row, their percentage of collection has went further and further down. I will only use by example, we've had some properties that somebody had reached out to me on, and when I inquired with the county, what was we doing, they were six years behind. Their explanation was, they had sent it to the attorney handling those two years ago, and they really didn't have an update. And I just let them know that that was unsatisfactory, and I just want the public to know that that's not the town collecting them, it's through Iredell County, and I hope the conversation I had with that person then changes a little more aggressively, that things don't sit around for two years with no explanation when we're trying to collect taxes.
All right, our next report is our ABC store. Mr. Getzinger is here.
I could have sworn when I sat here that there was going to be a walk from here to the podium.[1459.41][1459.41](laughter) I guess everybody knows I'm about half crippled, so thank you for helping me out with that. And congratulations, Josh. That was certainly well-deserved, and I should say chief rather than Josh. I would like to say real quickly, my first and only time ever seeing him in the ABC store as a civilian was riding, he had been cutting grass, and, is it okay if I? And he had cut the end of one of his fingers off, and I thought to myself, holy cow, you know, here, I mean, better man than me, I'd still be at home crying, you know, but anyway, but he manned up, did what he needed to do to get better, and I guess it grew back, and yeah. And here he is today, in charge of the police. But anyway, it's, and I've been directed, I've been asked, I have been threatened to keep this short by numerous people, and whose names will go unmentioned because I fear for my safety, but anyway, I'm going, I'm going to talk real quick, but I just, for you, you, I don't think I've ever explained to you how the money flows through the budget, so that, I'm going to do it real quickly, and if I've told you this before, please forgive me, I don't mean to be redundant, but I just, I think it would help when you hear some of these numbers to take them and put them into perspective, because when you tell somebody that you've had X number of dollars of revenue for the month, they think all of that is going to stay right here in Troutman and be part of, you know, the slush fund that we have been alleged to have, but nonetheless, it, out of every dollar, 54 cents of each dollar goes to the cost of the goods that we have to have to sell to the public. So that's 54 cents, and then 23 cents goes to the state for their various taxes, primarily the excise tax. And then that leaves 23 cents as a gross profit that we have as a store or board to pay our bills, and then whatever flows to the bottom line, then we bring, we give that as distributions, and we retain some for what will be future growth and hopefully a second store within the not, you know, too terribly distant future. But anyway, and that's, that is the quick and dirty on that, and with that being said, I just want to give you an example of, this quarter, we did a million, 28,718 dollars in sales. That's our best quarter since we've been in business, and I think we just finished year eight. Would that be right, 2016?
That's correct.
Okay. So, boy, time flies when you
December 1st, 2016 was the first day.
Yeah. It seems like yesterday. And I still see me sitting in the offices with you and Jeff, trying to find somebody that would please give us some money. So anyway, so with that, a million, 28,718 dollars gross profit after we paid the state, it's, it equates to about 30 percent, because they get 23 percent in excise tax, and then there's other taxes that they get, such as the mixed beverage taxes and surcharges and bailment. But then we, we had 236,300, 236,300 dollars in gross profit, and from that, we had 97,000 after distributions of 97,537 dollars. And distributions this, this quarter are 29,029, well, actually, 29,300 dollars for the town and its identified recipients, and law enforcement will receive 5,534 dollars, and the alcohol education and rehabilitation, which is DASI, will receive 7,748 dollars. So that is a quick and dirty on the profit and loss for the second quarter of the fiscal year, which ended in, at the end of December. And December was a great month, but it was not our best month with, two years ago, two, excuse me, ever since I had my episode with cancer, I, my nose won't quit running, and so, I mean
It's all right.
So I apologize for that, but anyway, we did 411,900 for the month of December, which is about 3,000 short of what we did in 2023, no, 22, because last year, we no, twenty-two, because last year we did a little less than four hundred thousand in, in December. But this year, um, we, we actually had a net increase over last year's, uh, second quarter, which was nine hundred and thirty-one thousand in, in sales to, and I'm, I'm using rounded numbers, Mayor, so if there's, uh, I'll, I'll send Kim the, uh, the printout with the actual numbers so that y'all can have that, and I, but I realize these may, may be generating questions, too. Anyway, we had, we had an increase of ninety, almost ninety-eight thousand over last year's second quarter for this year's, which was about ten point five percent increase. So, we are seeing some degree of, uh, recovery, but January has started out about like January did in five, six years ago, and I guess with this new, uh, is it dry December? Or there's a major push out that tries to encourage people to take the month of, not, not December, but January, take January off, uh, to prove that they can do it, but anyway, so we're, we're, we're seeing some of the results of that, and, you know, hooray for those folks that are doing it because they need to do it, and we, we appreciate their business any other time as well. With that being said, I, I think I've told you, let's see what, here. We, we currently have about three hundred and twenty-four thousand in inventory in the store, which is an increase in the last year's, uh, of about thirty thousand, and we'll just, that'll allow for us to rock that number back down into the low two, two hundred thousands for January and February, which, as you, some of you would know that are in retail, that January and February tend to be the slowest months of the year, so we won't need to be buying nearly the kind of inventory that we have been buying for these next two months, and that, that will live off of what we have in the pantry and replace those items that have become new best sellers. But, and with that being said, uh, we're, right now, we're on track for, to do three and, about three and a half million in, uh, total sales for the year, we budgeted three point one million, um, which puts us about four hundred thousand ahead of last year, I mean, ahead of budget. And our profitability right now is, uh, about fifty-some percent of, uh, ahead of budget. So, we are, we're ahead of the game in, in most every, uh, aspect, and don't know, uh, I, I, just so that you are aware, and I'm sure that all of you have probably read the articles that are either on internet or on, in the paper or other news media, but there is a push on by the federal government to, uh, to put warning labels on all alcohol, and, uh, so there will be quite a bit of, you know, implication of some degree across the spectrum for everybody, uh, as people come to realize that there are serious consequences, at least as it stands to be known right now, uh, that create cancer. For, there's seven different cancers that they, uh, associate with consumption of alcohol. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see how that ripples through the, uh, the landscape in the coming year or next. And I've, I've gone through, I've done a quick and dirty here, just because I, I know this is one of those rare nights where y'all can possibly get out of here early, and I don't want to be the reason why I had to stay late, for health reasons. Yes, sir.
Any, any questions for Mr. Getzinger?
Yes, sir. Huh?
Yep, I'm just gonna say, just as the, uh, the previous, the previous speaker, uh, I'm, I'm tickled to death what I'm hearing, and, uh, continue to, you and the, I say you and, uh, staff, and, uh, the other two on the ABC board continue to amaze, and, uh, while, as you have so stated, we're certainly not out trying to encourage you wanting to drink, but if that's their choice.
Right.
Uh, under the law, and that's what they want to do, then we provide a service. And that's what we're doing, and this is the result of that, and, uh, we, we appreciate everything that the board, as well as the staff is, is continues to do. And, uh, my only other, my only question is, uh, now, I probably sound like a broken record, is, uh, are we, you know, south of town, what's, what's the latest on that?
Well, the, right now, I mean, based on, we're wanting to see an uptick in the economy that is sustainable to give us the, uh, revenues that would be able to cost justify taking on the expense of that second store. Right now, uh, we could still service with the revenues that we're generating. If we, if we did three point five million, that to me is, that, that is a minimum amount of revenue that we, I mean, because you're gonna pull business from the current store when you put that second store in place, that's to be, uh, you know, understood, not to mention that you, with, with all the other growth that is projected for that area, that will give us the additional revenues that we need, but when things slowed down from a construction perspective, it, you know, it gave us reason to pause to, to wait and see when things are gonna, you know, move back in a, in a direction that shows us the robust economy, and have no reason to believe that that won't be sometime this year. But it's not because of any reasons other than we're just wanting to make sure that it's a wise decision, a, a good investment. And then when you throw these other things I mentioned into the equation, want to make sure they don't have some type of an impact that would impact our ability to get back, give back to the town what the town is and really started all this to begin with, to help, you know, bring money in to support, uh, areas in your, in your budget and in the community that, uh, would otherwise, you know, maybe not get as funded to the level that we'd like. So, I hope that.
Yeah, it's just, as I understand, yeah, you just see, see the pulse of the economy, you know, and I'm not a table crystal ball, but we can certainly get a feel for it, and you're, you know, while we're financially stable enough that you could go ahead, you're holding off, and, uh, I can appreciate that. And, uh, obviously, our current store is doing very well, and.
Right.
Uh, this is just mainly to, in my mind, a service to the people south of town, they don't have to drive quite as far or go to a competitor in Morrisville, so, so to speak. And, uh, that, that's, you know, that's perfectly reasonable, I think.
And I, and I appreciate the comments, because I'm, I'm fully supportive of your thoughts, and I'm eager. And I, I failed to mention one thing that is very important, and that is that we got a, a report from the ABC Commission, uh, this past week, and it is a printout of ranking all of the ABC boards, a hundred and eighty-two boards across the state, based on their percentage of profit to their revenues. And we broke out number twelve out of a hu, of a hundred and eighty-two at thirteen point four percent. So, that is, you know, Evelyn doing a great job of running a tight ship and, you know, making sure that we're not spending money that is not cost justified to spend. And we, uh, have a great staff, they're all, they, they treat the place like it's their family, and so they run it as though it was their family, and that always helps when you've got employees that have bought into your culture, into your, uh, mindset. So, I, I, I'm very, I feel very good about where we stand in regards to all the fellow boards, and, you know, obviously, we're just a single store, but percentage-wise, there are plenty of boards that have bigger, a, a lot more revenue than we do, that are, with lower percentages of, uh, their money going to the bottom line, so, and, and when, if, you would think more would give you the ability, because you get the economies of scale when you have multiple boards, you don't have to add additional management layers in, at the, at the, at the mothership or in the central command, you just need to have a, a, a staff to run that next store. So, uh, what the revenues are in that store should cover that, uh, expense or overhead. So, anyway, so I'm, I'm sorry I failed to mention that at the beginning, because that's probably the most important thing I had to share with you.
So, I do have a question, when you mentioned giving back to the town, uh, are you referring to ways outside of the already preset distribution?
No, the, the town, we, we have no input into how the town distributes the, uh, money. The, the two places, we, we have a mandatory requirement to either have a, a, a part-time, uh, police officer or pay the local police department a percentage of our profits to, uh, provide the security for the store. But, uh, and then the alcohol and drug, uh, we are required by the state to have a program or support a program with seven percent of our net profit.
I guess my question was leaning more towards you were speaking of like giving back to the town for the success of your store, if I heard you correct.
If, if I may, town council, at least on three different occasions, if my memory serves me, decides the certain funds that they, uh, give back to the town, the town council has decided previously where those are. Part of it is law enforcement, uh, part of it is the library, uh, the recreation fund, and then the schools is what's been voted on previously. I'll be happy to get you that information and send it to you, what our last distribution from the town council was.
So, and part of the clarification, because I know you weren't on the board at that time, but the, the three that, um, Mr. Getzinger is speaking of, is three that were set up at the time that the ABC board was set up, and so part of it is a distribution to the town, to law enforcement and to drug and alcohol, and so.
And I'm sorry for confusing you with my comments that.
It's okay.
And I, and I didn't understand the question, because when, uh, Town Manager Wyatt explained it, I, I thought everybody knew, already knew that, and so I apologize.
Sorry, Mr. Now.
Yeah, I just would want you to convey back, uh, being an ex, uh, employee of, of yours and worked for Evelyn and worked for a couple of the people on the board, how proud I am of the job that yourself and Evelyn and the board and the employees, you hit the nail on the head. I, I kind of thought that it, like, I was a part of that store and working for it, and it made me feel good, and I'm so proud to sit here today as a council member and seeing how well the ABC store is under your guidance and Evelyn's guidance and the rest of your board, very proud.
Well, thank you for that, and, and, you know, there's a lot of people in this room that have a, a role in getting this board started and, and off the ground, and, uh, I mean. I don't want to overlook anybody, but I mean, Mr. Wyatt, Councilman Hinkle, yourself, the mayor was, uh, involved, so the, it takes a, a village, if you will, but the culture that we were able to create with Evelyn's leadership has allowed for us to be able to have this kind of success, because you folks are the ones that, that lived the culture and brought the culture to life. And, uh, to me, that's the joy I get out of, because there's so little that you can influence in an ABC store, I mean, we can't set prices, we don't determine who we buy our liquor from and what we're gonna pay for and what the retail's gonna be, we, that, all that's preset. So, we can control customer service, and we can control the cleanliness of the store and the appearance of the outside, and, you know, those are all things that, that make, I think, uh, curb appeal and, and make people want to come back, and we, we get a lot of very positive feedback from people that come from other places when they have options that are closer by, and that's due to, you're, you're, the crowd that you came in with, the, the freshman class, that, uh, that, that was a great group, and I mean, it's just, it, it has followed suit with the people that we got today.
Well, the work environment was fabulous when I was there, and I can see that it's still fabulous now, so. Keep doing the great job that everybody's doing there, please.
Well, thank you for that, I appreciate it, and I'm gonna show.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Getzinger, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
All right, the next item on the agenda is, um, considering setting a date and time for the council retreat. And what I would say is, um, I know Mr. Oxer's not here, um, and as we started on, uh, Monday, a couple of dates, and, and I tried to get, get a few with him, but, um, I think we're probably into March, um, and so I'm gonna ask folks to look at March dates and just consider early March, um, I think we've had it probably even as late, uh, as mid to late March, but consider early March, and, um, we can set those dates, um, at the next meeting, if, if that's agreeable with staff, but we, I think we need to have Mr. Oxer here.
No, no problems from staff, I'd just like to caution, we, we do need to do early March or earlier, uh, because we will start the budget process in April.
Right.
So, if it's late March, it will not give the department heads time, if anything comes up in the strategic planning session, to give them ample time to prepare for that with any fact-finding they may need to do for their budget requests.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll exchange, uh, a couple of dates for, uh, at the latest early March, that first week, um, or last week of February. If folks got vacation or times, let me know, and, uh, we'll, we'll set that accordingly.
The only issue from town side is on the sixth, uh, there is tentatively scheduled a design review board meeting at three thirty, so Thursday, the sixth, um, is probably not a good option unless we start way early.
All right, I'll get the dates from Jerry as well. Okay.
Hey, how you doing? And, and, so, I mean, you.
My, my, my thought is that I, I probably need to send you all just a quick email with, um, some dates for late February, March, and see which one works best.
Is Councilman Oxer okay with the last week of February?
I don't know that he was. I didn't, I, I wasn't pushing out that far, just, I was trying to do early February, but given we've got a meeting in February, it might be also during that timeframe, so. If, if folks want to think about the, um, the fourteenth, or thirteen, fourteenth, which is.
Of February?
Of February, that's, that's, I'd said no, um, unless your significant others will not be happy. So, um, but we'll look for late February, I'll send a note out.
Reason, is there something in mid-February being?
Mr. Now, Councilman Now could not, the first and second week of February.
Okay.
Uh, Oxer could not the third week of February.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth is.
Yeah, and I won't be here on the twenty-seventh.
Remember. You and I will, and the manager, last week of February, thought we'd be out of town for a day or so.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, all right. That's that event that's labeled.
Which, again, while I'm into March.
So, that's why the mayor said first of March.
If y'all would just work with me, we will get there. Okay? Thank you. I'll say, I'll.
We'll reach it in an enlightened manner.
I'll send a note out. All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, new business, and we've got consideration of a Verizon contract, Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, as you all see, I gave you two documents, Verizon, just to remind those that's viewing, uh, that may not be aware, our water tower up here on Old Murdoch Road, somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand. neighborhood of 2016, 17, was denied the ability to put up cell towers. At that time, there was a lot of controversy and issue, health-related risks that were presumed, et cetera. So the town denied their ability to put up a cell tower. Shortly thereafter, they agreed nearest I can tell, 2018, with official agreement to rent space on our water tower for them to put cell tower equipment up there to save from having to build a tower somewhere else. At that point, they began paying us an annual lease. I cannot, and I've asked a clerk to find documentation, have no clue what that original agreement was. And they sent us a proposal December, mid-December, as you can see by the date, asking that we consider their rental amounts for six five-year leases or take a lump sum payment for a 99-year lease. They reached out last week, or I'm sorry, earlier this week, asking if I was going to respond. I expressed their proposal was in between council meetings and they gave me, and I told them I didn't think their offer was high enough, but if that was their best offer, I would take it before you all for a thumbs up or a thumbs down. They sent a new proposal, which is dated January 6th of the two that you have. The new rent amount monthly would be 1975 per month commencing on April 1st of this year. The rent escalator would be 3% increase every year, beginning on April 1st. That is for a six-five-year term or you have a lump sum payment of $427,700, but that is for a 45-year easement on the property. My personal recommendation and speaking with our financial director is it would be better to take the 1975 per month with 3% annual increases instead of lump sum.
Ron, is there any way possibly that we could maybe find out from some friends from other communities that we could probably just talk to and see what maybe the going rate is if they have Verizon towers, what they're kind of getting, so maybe we could negotiate a little bit more?
I already did that.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I told them I didn't think their offer was high enough. They were market rate for our area, but I also learned that if you tell them they're not high enough, they'll give you a little more, which is what they did. It's an additional $2,500 a year over the terms, an additional $75,000 increase. We can certainly try to counter, but I do not anticipate them going much higher.
So the money that they're offering is comparable to other communities with, near us?
In our immediate area, it's more than any of them are getting.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
The only, I don't have a question, but I just have, you know, to me, I don't want to lock us in for a 99-year on the December, of course, that's the lowest number anyhow, but, you know, I don't want to lock us in any more than the 45 years, I don't want to lock us in for that continuously. To me, as the town manager staff recommended, you know, five, five-year periods, renewable 3% increase, you know, and either one of us, I guess, in that time, in the five years can, can certainly back out if that's the choice. So it gives us wiggle room on, is both parties wiggle room. But to me, that's, that's the better of all the, what I'm seeing here and not locking us in for any extraordinary period of time and renewal and then the 3% increase as well, which hopefully with inflation supposedly coming under tainment, taming down, that that 3% will be favorable interest over the next six renewable periods.
My only comment is the numbers look good, but the rent escalator, I would like to see a 5% yearly increase is that's pretty standard for any residential or commercial rent increase year over year.
I'll, I'll send them whatever you all suggest.
My only question would be, is that escalators, would that be similar to other contracts that they have?
Others and managers that I spoke to were two and a half to three. Nobody was above three.
Okay. Yeah, I'm agreeable to either, but I don't, I don't know that we're going to get five. That's just what I'm, what I'm thinking.
Ask for 10, hope for 5.
You can always ask.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm probably just confused. It says new rent amount 1975 commencing on 4/1/25. Then the next sentence says 3% every year beginning 4/1/26. So from 4/1/25 to 4/1/26, is it still just 1975?
That's correct.
And after that, it'll escalate 3%.
Yeah, so it'll basically renew every April. Yeah, add 3%.
Well, I, you know, obviously, if we can get more, that's well and good, but as long as we can at least keep up with inflation, if not a little bit better with the 3%, but again, you know, if we can get to 5%, we can ask and worst they can say is no, best they can say is heck yeah. So either way, you know, I'm, I'm agreeable with the, with what the staff's recommended. Again, trying to see if we can get a bit more on the percentage increase.
Is that a motion?
Well, yes, sir.
Motion's on the floor that we approve the agreement with the request for, to Town Manager to see if we can increase the rent escalator from three to at least five.
Second that.
Okay. Motion received a second. Any other question or comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing that, motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comments. The public is invited to address the council with any comments or concerns. You have three minutes and I'll ask anybody if they've got comments. If not, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is elected official reports. And I'll start to my left, Ms. Jeroszinski.
Um, I have a question.
Ms. Harris?
Um, comments. Happy New Year to everyone and congratulations to Chief Watson. Couldn't come on a better day, National Law Enforcement Day, right? So congratulations and happy National Law Enforcement Day.
Ms. Now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see everyone come out that could possibly come out next Friday for our Martin Luther King Day breakfast and also Martin Luther King Day work detail to give back to our community. I think I've attended every event so far since I've been elected and it's a great day. It's a great breakfast. We have some great, we've had some great speakers and to go out into the community and volunteer and work for that day is very rewarding. So I'd like to invite everyone, get ahold of our Parks and Rec people and respond that they'd like to go. And I'd also like to congratulate Chief Watson. I'm a retired policeman, so one of the sayings that we have where I was from is Chief Watson's a cop's cop and we, you don't find many of them. So congratulations, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, I debated whether to say this while ago when, after the award was given and we had a chance to speak and I held back and I just, I wish I now because there are more people in the room, but I just wanted to say that I was part of the committee that the Town Manager had formed to interview and give opinions to the, recommendations to the Town Manager on who to hire. And obviously, it was Josh that I think was head and shoulders above everyone else, in my opinion. And it's a recommendation that, thank goodness, the Town Manager listened to and followed through on and I have never regretted that recommendation of Town Manager in my life and I think is one of the best decisions I've made since all the years I've been on council. And I want to thank you, thank you for your service and your continuing service and I appreciate you making me look good.
You're welcome. Thank you for picking me.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Cassis?
Happy New Year, as Ms. Harris said. I look forward to serving with the staff this coming year and I end up running into Mr. Chuck Guyen today. I think he's already ready to call Emily about the parade, so I'm like, we, we're just barely into '25, but really good work last year by all the staff and I know a lot has happened and I know there, there will be a lot of opportunity for us to continue to grow and get better as a town. But I would say it's, I was in Raleigh and I've heard so many people come up and say really positive things about our town. So, and again, that, that just goes to the staff and who we are and I actually was in Mooresville a little bit earlier today and some folks in Mooresville speaking highly of Troutman. And so, again, it's, it's just been good to know that, you know, we've got a chief who really has done a great job in, in supporting our citizens from a law enforcement perspective. We've got great parks and recs and, you know, we even had an awesome audit tonight and so, you know, the, the growth that we've had, couldn't been better to have Andrew part of the team and continue to lead, lead that work. And Ms. Wyatt has, has already been said, helping to lead this group over the last few years and that, that too seems like yesterday, but is it four years or, yeah, we're, we're moving fast. So again, thank you all for what you do every day for the town. Look forward to working with you in '25. So thank you so much. I can't forget Kim always shows up at my door, my dogs barking to bring my packet. So awesome, great work as our clerk as well. So thank you so much for that. I would also like to reiterate, we've got MLK, Martin Luther King Day of Celebration and Service. Look forward to folks being able to participate in that Day of Service. As Dr. King has always said, the one thing that everybody can participate in is giving back to their fellow man. And so I appreciate what you all will do, not just that day, but every day. And so again, thank you for what you'll do in, in that celebration. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Wyatt for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for y'alls kind comments and positive comments about the various department directors. Just like you, Mr. Mayor, people used to say, where is Troutman? And now they are telling us things that we are doing and/or various department directors we have because of the quality of staff that is here and I'm very appreciative to see that. Also, Leighton Getzinger texted me after he left and said he would be remiss if he did not recognize Debbie Page as being one of the ones when we was working on the liquor store back in 2016, that she did wonderful and volunteer hours and put up the, helped put up the initial batch of liquor that Martin started drinking. He said, but, but it, it was a glorious day to open that December 1st. The mayor and I know the two of us still have our special bottles that was signed that day and it's kind of crazy to hear the numbers he's talking about now as compared to what the projections were. I, I too would like to thank all of our department heads. I cannot relay the confidence to the public about each one of these department heads and how careful and frugal they are with their budgets and the discussions that I hear from time to time and them talking to Justin or vice versa about various things in their budgets and if they should buy it now or wait till later or when's the best thing. And it really tickles me that every year, unlike most governmental places, they spend it, spend it, spend it, or it's gone, gone, gone. That's not our department directors. They buy what they need, understanding that if they don't spend it, it goes into a different secret fund Justin's got somewhere that he can pull out next year if we have an emergency or a need. And just like you all's previous comments, it tickles me to see the town's financial position with where it is today compared to, to eight years ago. But in reality, even though it's real good numbers, we have a lot of expenditure coming in our future with the building of a town hall, remodeling of a building to possibly be a town hall or rec center, combination public works, ever how that works. We, we're getting ready to have lots of expense in the future. We are not just spending extra money because we have extra money. I, I'm here to tell you these department directors are more frugal than they were a few years ago as far as when they spend it, it's because of the value and the return. The best examples we've all talked about is the Elf thing that happened in Christmas. What a wonderful idea that created so much happiness without it costing a whole lot of money, but it was time and effort on the employees and the staff that participated and a great idea that Emily had. But that's all I have for now.
Great, thank you. All right, if no other reports, we will motion to go into closed session pursuant to.
No, sir. We removed that.
Oh, that's right, we did. I saw it on the screen, I was like.
Our IT got messed up, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I was like, I didn't think there was anything else.
We'll address him shortly.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If there's no opposition, we are adjourned. If you do oppose, welcome to stay. I think the heat will be on for another hour.
He probably knows because he said number 14.
Yeah, I have to mark it off my sheet, but he.